Thank you all for being here. You have already turned off yourselves, I appreciate it. My name is Linda Curtis and I’m chairing tonight’s candidate forum sponsored by Independent Texans. Independent Texans is a political action committee founded in 2001 that sometimes endorses candidates in ballot measures. We’re very excited to hold our very first forum for the Bastrop City Council race that’s going on right now. Early voting started today and goes through May 3rd and election day is May 7th. This is a nonpartisan election as are all city council races in Texas. Now, if you are an independent voter who votes more for the person than the party, we invite you to join the Membership Association for Independents, the League of Independent Voters, which is a nonprofit organization that does not endorse candidates. And our website is popularly known as StopWaterGrab.org. And we have literature in the back for you on the way out. I want to thank the candidates, candidates for Place One, Bill Peterson and Herb Goldsmith, and candidates for Place Five, Kelly Gilliland and Debra Jones, for agreeing to be part of this. And thanks to the folks in the audience and those out there in the online world at BTXNTV.tv. Thank you. And thank you very much to the city of Bastrop for allowing us to use City Hall tonight and their streaming facilities at BTXNT.tv. So, we’re going to get right to it. First, the rules for tonight. The rules for the audience are to not clap or cheer, please watch and write your questions on the little blue cards that you might have been handed on your way in. If not, just raise your hand and we’ll get one to you. Charlotte can do that from the back. And the candidates have two minutes to open, two minutes to close, two minutes to answer, and then two minutes to answer questions. And the first person to answer will have the opportunity to give a 30-second rebuttal. Independent Texans will ask five questions, then we will allow the candidates to ask their opponent one question, then we’ll open up for audience questions. And Cade Helmkamp, who is sitting in the front here, raise your hand. Cade just was allowed me to draft him to do the timing because my timer is not here yet and we’ll get him later. So, we have a form evaluation for you to use, for the audience to fill out, if you so choose. They’re in the back and you can fill them out before you leave. We’d like to get your feedback. You are also everywhere, even the folks who are watching, invited to La Hacienda following the event to socialize and share information. Okay, so, any questions? All right, we’re going to get on with the show then. And the first person up would be Herb Goldsmith. The candidates picked a number out of the hat so they’re going in the order they chose randomly. So, you’re up.
Hello, my name is Herb Goldsmith. I’m running for Place One. I’ve given it a great deal of thought before I ran. I’m going to go see my doctor tomorrow to have my head examined. But honestly, this is a lot of work. And I really applaud anybody who’s held a public office, especially in an office like this where there’s really no pay. It’s work. You have to be dedicated, you have to be willing to make the sacrifice. And in preparing for these forums, I realized what a sacrifice it can be. It was a lot easier to stand, sit over there where you are at and make my points than to come up here and do what I need to do. Am I qualified? Yes. Do I only have 30 seconds left?
No, that’s faster.
Oh, gee, I was wondering, this is fast. Okay, I’m glad we got that rule established. I am well-qualified. I have professional experience includes 11 years of government management and 13 years of private sector management. I hold degrees in psychology. And I did postgraduate work in policy science. I actually was enrolled in a PhD program in criminology, transferred to policy science. Because I married my fine wife and had children, I settled for an advanced graduate certificate, which I’m proud of anyway because I learned so much from that graduate school. I believe in transparency. I believe that we have to have a high accountability in governance. And I believe that the rapid growth of Bastrop needs to be done with the highest level of integrity in municipal governance. I serve on the city’s boards of adjustments, chair the Form-Based Code Initiative, and have served on the steering committee for the Bastrop Economic Development Strategic Plan for 2012. I volunteer at the Smithville Community Clinic, serve on the Boys and Girls Club Board Director. Oh, wow. So, in closing, I’m willing to make sacrifice. I’ve been watching government since I’ve been here. I came here about nine years ago. And the last two and three, I’ve been watching very closely. If I don’t attend the meetings, I read the minutes. I’m especially interested in BEDC and the city council. In closing, I just really appreciate being here. Thank you for smiling and helping me get over my shyness.
Okay, thank you. And Bill Peterson?
Good afternoon, everyone. Excuse me. My name is Bill Peterson and I’m running for city council, Place One. I just want everyone to know that I’m very proud to say I’m a native Bastropian. I’m married to my lovely wife, Willie, in the audience, and have three of those children. I’m number two of 10 siblings that all live in Bastrop, Bastrop County. And I’m proud to say I still have my mother here in the audience. Through my military training and the United States Army Security Agency, I’m retired for civilian service for 24 years for the federal parole prisons. And I’ve previously served on the Bastrop City Council for three years. And I think that truly qualifies me to run for public service again. I’m active in the community with Curly Community Center. I’m a member of the local American Legion. I’m on the Community Relations Board with the federal congressional institution at Bastrop. And I served with the city also on the Form-Based Code Task Force. And that task force is challenged to take a look at how Bastrop, the models of what Bastrop can look in the future. It is inevitable that Bastrop is going to grow. We need strong, and we need a strong and united city council to guide the city manager through the growth process. With the future growth, we must promote smart and responsible growth. I want to be a part of that process. If elected, my main goal is to serve the citizens of Bastrop by keeping City Hall very transparent. And lastly, I am not a politician, I’m a public servant.
Thank you. Kelly Gilliland.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Gilliland and I currently serve as the Place Five council member on the Bastrop City Council. I was elected in 2014 for a partial term, a two-year term, that I am filling after our current mayor, Ken Kestlis, left his post to run for mayor. So, I’ve only been in office for two years of the normal three-year term, but already I have, I’m proud to say that I’ve brought some initiatives to the city that have been raging successes. One has been our first career in job fair, where we not only found jobs for 20 of our citizens, but we partnered with BISD and had a career fair for the kids so that they could chart their career paths and also meet employers in the vicinity. We’re trying to keep our kids here rather than having the brain drain where they leave and go off elsewhere. So, that was one initiative that I started and it’ll be continued again this year. The other is the Bastrop Team Up to Clean Up. The first one we did was to pick up trash around the city and we offered cash prizes and we had 12 teams compete and we picked up tons of trash, tens of tons of trash. The second one was a recycling challenge where we brought awareness to our new waste handler who offers recycle bins. And we also offered cash prizes. And I think we had 20 teams for that one. So, also a resounding success and also something that will be repeated in the future. I’ve been in Bastrop for 11 years. I’m married to my wonderful husband, Greg, who’s the first assistant district attorney in Bastrop County. My son, Andy, plays basketball for the Bastrop Bears in the high school. I have a daughter in Houston who loves to visit and wishes she could live here too. What I’m telling you that for is because I want you to know that this is home. This is, even though we’ve been here 11 years, we’re not leaving. This is where we belong, this place is a community, the people care about each other. And I want to continue to do my part to help guide us into a better future. So, I’m asking for your vote, Kelly Gilliland.
All right.
It started today.
Thank you. And Debra Jones?
I’ve been part of this community for over 30 years. As a successful rural appraiser, I’m well-informed and equipped to understand the complex issues that our city faces. As a council member, I will represent our citizens and promote and promise to secure a strong future for the city of Bastrop through positive, reasonable, and responsible leadership. My husband, Michael, is a filmmaker. He owns Gallery Films. My son, Daniel, is a personal trainer and a musician. His wife, Casey, is a licensed appraiser and yoga instructor, all here in Bastrop. Dominique is the director of Jones Square and the marketing director for Chick-fil-A. Our son, Seth, is on the Navy SEAL team at A&amp;M Galveston. Our son, Hannan, is a state champion football player and a state track star. Our daughter, Dominique, soon to be married to Stephen Barnett, who owns his own electric That being said, those are the reasons that I’m running for city council. My children left Bastrop and were educated and came back, and every one of them has made their home here. My priorities are water, roads, infrastructure, health, and safety. And as a solution-oriented council member, I will champion education, economic development, tourism, and recreation. I ask for your vote for Debra Jones, Place Five.
All right, thank you. Okay, so, I’m going to get right into the questions and we’re going to start the first question with Bill Peterson. What is your understanding of the water supply needs of the city of Bastrop? And please include in your answer how you feel about whether the city should be able to sell water outside of its need to supply water in the city limits.
I truly believe in the needs of Bastrop with its growth, that we need all the water that we can get in Bastrop and Bastrop County. And the city is truly making pretty good strides to take care of our water system. But I definitely do not want the city of Bastrop to start promoting the sale of water from Bastrop, from any of its wells. It’s doing a good job, just trying to keep up with growth and I think they continue down that same road. Thank you.
And Herb Goldsmith.
Mike Talbot did an analysis that has prepared us for the future to 2050 regarding the water needs of this area. It’s very technical. I’ve been following with Independent Texans, et cetera. There’s a lot of science behind understanding exactly what an aquifer is and how water’s taken from an aquifer. And when it’s taken from one region, how it affects the other region. And we are a part of that. People want some of our water to send down to San Antonio. And the marketers are lining up. Water is gold now. In terms of the city being able to sell water to a marketer or another organization, I do not believe that’s in the best interest of the city, nor do I think anybody on city council, I do not think anyone on city council would vote for such a thing. And if that ever came up, my understanding is there are some folks that believe it needs to be on a ballot. At this point in time, I just do not foresee selling water to another entity as valuable as this resource is to our own community.
Okay, thank you. And Debra Jones? Yes, ma’am.
Without enough water, our future literally hangs in the balance. The city of Bastrop currently has wells. We paid $2 million cash for water rights with unpermitted wells and have been tangled up in lawsuits ever since. That, to me, points to a bigger problem that we have in the city of another symptom, which is excessive lawsuits and legal fees. These fees come out of our general fund. And this makes less money available for us to deal with our citizens and issues that we have to deal with at home. We do have interests in two other wells that we’re in the process of putting together. I think that the city’s idea to move forward with its own wells was a good one. And I agree with the other people up here that I don’t think that it’s in our best interest to get into the business of selling any of that water.
Okay, thank you. And Kelly Gilliland?
So, I’d like to clarify something that Ms. Jones said as a detriment to the city. She said, “We spent $2 million on unpermitted wells. You cannot apply for a water permit unless you already own the water rights.” So, it was impossible for us to apply for the permit for these wells without already spending the $2 million to purchase them. The permit is actually a production permit, it’s not a drilling permit. We’ve drilled the test wells already so we know how deep the wells are going to be. We know, we’ve done numerous studies to show exactly where we’re going to be producing from and how it will affect the neighboring community. Because people in the neighborhood, the rural areas out there, are afraid that our water wells are going to suck the water right out of their farms and ranches. And that’s not the case. We’re drilling far deeper than their wells even touch. So, we won’t touch their water, they will still have water. And if, by some reason, we do, we have a contingency plan to help them with that in place. This has been part of our negotiations and you just can’t, to say we’ve wasted $2 million is wrong. We had to spend that money in order to get the permits. The city of Bastrop originally wanted 6,000 acre feet. That would provide us for water for 50 years. We’ve backed off on that and said, “We will do this as the Lost Pines Groundwater District does, in five-year increments,” because that’s how their permits go, you have to have them reissued every five years. And we have applied for 2,000 acre feet. That will supply the city of Bastrop for 15 to 20 years. So, what we did, and the purchase price that we paid for this, is so attractive that that is what is attracting all the water marketers from around the state.
She’s over?
I’m over? Okay, sorry.
Okay. All right. I’m going to move on to the next question and this will start with Herb Goldsmith on this one. Okay. What amendments, if any, do you think need to be made to the city’s Home Rule Charter? Please include in your answer if you support the city’s current term limits of two, three-year terms, and whether you think Bastrop should have single-member districts, otherwise known as geographic representation.
First of all, I do not believe there should be any charter amendments at this point in time. Once you execute, put an amendment on the ballot, if it’s adopted, then you freeze out our charter review for two years. Is there anything on the charter right now that currently needs to be changed immediately and prioritized in front of our bond issues? No, I don’t believe so. I believe we should have a charter review. I believe we should do it at the right time and we should be done transparently. It should be done with public input. It should be done in such a way where it is a better charter, not just a charter that has something attached to it because one particular or a particular group believes that’s what’s important. So, given that, I do believe in single-member districts. I do believe that we should study and consider single-member districts for Bastrop. Far too many people live in one area of town and I’m now guilty. We all lived down in Pecan or shortly thereafter. Single-member districts, with the way it has to be done and the science behind it, means that each district has to have representation from all the ethnic races in each district. It’s not an easy thing to do, but it will ensure that everybody is equally represented and has the opportunity to have someone represent them in their office. It won’t be east side, west side, north, south, middle. It’ll be very, very complex, but I do believe in it. But again, I say no to any charter amendments at this point in time. We have other priorities.
Okay, and Bill Peterson?
Excuse me. I think the charter should stay as is. The three-year terms are okay for the time being, but I do know that Bastrop is growing. But the charter at this time does not need to be revised. Well, maybe one thing you could do is give the council members and the mayors gas money for the running around that’s entailed with the job. That’s about the only thing I can see on the charter right now. But I don’t think that Bastrop is ready for single-member districts. I think what I’ve done in the past is get out and visit all these areas and represent the people in all areas of Bastrop. But single-member districts, I think the way that Bastrop is laid out at the present time with the population in different areas, I just don’t think it’s ready for a single-member district. Thank you.
All right. And next would be Kelly Gilliland?
I would concur with my two counterparts up here who both said that we probably should avoid a charter amendment. However, one of the council members has proposed a charter amendment that says that if the city of Bastrop decides to, that it needs at some point to sell any of the water that it produces, it would have to come to a public vote. And I do agree with that. And since that’s already out there, if the charter amendment goes through, I would be in favor of that as well because I think the citizens need to decide that. I also have proposed a charter amendment that tries to eliminate double-voting for council members. We have council members that serve on other boards and committees. They vote there and then they bring their projects to council and they vote here. We’ve tried to go the route of asking those boards not to have them vote, but so far we haven’t gotten much traction with that. Putting it in the charter would ensure that the council members would not have too much influence on these city boards and commissions. I also have heard that there’s a charter amendment idea floating around where we might extend term limits for city council members and the mayor. And I’d like to say that I am opposed to that. I think the current terms are plenty and I don’t think that we should have the continuous service that we’ve been having. We’ve had some council members on here for more than 20 years. The way it’s set up now, you can serve your two terms, be off a year, and run again. And I think that’s fair enough.
All right, thank you. And Debra Jones?
I don’t think that there’s anything pressing enough for us to make any changes to the charter. I think that if we have committees that want people to be allowed to vote on there, that they should be allowed to vote. I don’t think that we need to be meddling in their business. I think if we have council members that want to spend their time or they’ve gotten nominated to those committees, I think that’s fine. I’m not for limiting and putting more rules and restrictions on the council. As for districts, I agree with Mr. Peterson. I don’t think we’re ready for that. You know, if we have people in town that are willing to serve or people from Tahitian that are willing to serve and they can, you know, do what they need to do to get elected, it’s let the people vote, let the people decide who’s going to be on the council. So, that’s it.
All right, thank you. Next question, we’re going to start with Mr. Peterson. What do you feel is the best way to structure a destination marketing organization previously called the Convention and Visitors Bureau? Please include in your answer why you think this is such a hot, pun intended, topic.
I think at this time, DMOs are great for the city, but I think the city is right now struggling with how to structure that, where to privatize it. But they do need to bring in someone with marketing experience. And the marketing really helps our city to, it helps our city to grow and be able to get out, reach out to other entities so we can get people to come and visit our fair city. And like I said, it’s hard to say how it’s going to work out now, but it definitely needs to be thoroughly investigated before the city moves forward on their marketing strategies. Thank you.
All right, and Herb Goldsmith?
It’s a fairly complex topic, but broken down, basically says a percentage of the, there’s a tax on people when they spend the night and that tax is then turned over and is to be used for convention, tourism, and marketing. Right now, we’re averaging about almost a million a year to accompany Bastrop Marketing Corporation in Dallas. And they are marketing the city, the convention center, et cetera. We have a problem. I don’t know what isn’t working, but I do know this. The convention center’s been in operation for a while and it still only generates about 18% of its revenues. The entire amount and the other 92 or 82% is funded through hot funds. And the Bastrop Marketing Corporation, as I said, and that’s about a million a year, including debt reduction and the operations. Then you have another almost million a year was going out to the Bastrop Marketing Corporation, so about almost $2 million in hot funds is dripping into those two entities. I don’t want to get into the hot topic of the convention center because they tell me if I keep talking about things in the past, that’s water over the dam or water under the bridge. Well, the reality is, how many dams and bridges do you want to build? The thing is now, we need to take a look at grabbing that money back, doing, putting forth the effort in a way that will generate marketing, that profits everybody. Because if somebody just comes into town for a day and goes down to the business, we profit. How that should be structured, there are many models. They’re going to do an RFQ and hopefully they’ll come to a good decision on what the best model should be. So, I’m really looking forward to getting that money back and ending this question.
Okay. Next is, I’ve lost my place. Kelly, right? No, Debra.
I believe that the DMO should be kept out of the city. It should be set up separately. It should have its own board. Ultimately, the city has the power of the purse over that. As far as having additional people for that, we have a finance department. If we have questions over their budget, if we have questions over how money’s being spent, we have people in place that can review that. Everything that I’ve heard, everything that I’ve seen points toward that being the most efficient model of setting up a DMO. I know the only city that was used as an example to me as having its DMO within its city was San Antonio, who is now in the process of separating it because it’s become so inefficient. And I just think that’s typically the nature, when you get stuff tied up into the city, it just gets a bit bogged down. And I have a lot of faith in setting up committees and including more citizens and that kind of independence that that brings.
All right, thank you. And Kelly Gilliland?
The city collects about $2.8 million in hotel occupancy tax every year. The biggest investment, as Herb said, that we make with that money is to pay the debt on our convention center. The other, second-largest investment is to go to marketing the region. That investment, which is about $1 million a year, currently goes to, as Herb said, the Bastrop Marketing Corporation, which is, which was an independent entity but is now owned by the Hyatt, which is one of the reasons we are changing the way that the DMO structure is set up. The contract with the Hyatt expires next month and it is time for the city to choose a route on how we’re going to handle this enormous gift that we get. The structure should be completely, the structure should be controlled by the city because it is a tax and the city is responsible ultimately for the tax. That’s not to say that we can’t have stakeholder boards and that’s not to say that we can’t have input from marketing experts, but to completely divorce it from the city and have them be a 501(c)(3) or some other organization at this stage in our learning curve, I think is somewhat premature. 501(c)(3) is- 501(c)(3) is, Ms. Jones says, we, the city, have a finance department, and we can just look at their books. It doesn't work that way. When you vest the interest in a 501(c)(3) and you say, this is your function, here's your budget, come back and tell us what you've done with this money, we can't, without a lot of hassle and a lot of gyration, force them to give us their books. A case in point is the Art Guild right now. They have some discrepancies or some issues with their books, and we can't just go demand to see what their books say, even though the city has contributed to their project. So I think city control is important. Thanks.
Thank you. Just a quick commercial break here. If you are going to ask a question, please get a blue card from the back, or could maybe my late timekeeper Charles Petry, go get the card. Okay. Anyway, if you can get some blue cards and pass them around with pens, we're going to move on to that in just a minute. We've got two more questions from independent Texans. Then the candidates are going to be allowed to ask each other a question, and then we're going to open up for the audience. So the next question, the fourth out of five questions by independent Texans. This is a long one, but a really important one to us. In the words of Austin's demographer, quote, "Austin's affordability has collapsed," unquote. What can the city of Bastrop do to avoid the same fate for current Bastrop residents having to pay for the new infrastructure demanded by new residents? And I'm going to give you a hint. You might talk about how sustainable growth is good and incentivizing hypergrowth can be destructive to a diverse local economy, and what tools do you think you have to even address this issue? All right, so we're going to start with Herb Goldsmith.
Okay. I read the article. I've been to part of the meetings. I understand how growth could be as written, as unbridled. And also, there is the issue of infrastructure incentivizing and things of that sort. One is, I do not believe in giving incentives, just in violating the public trust of the money. When the developers come in, they will be a part of the infrastructure development and building. They know this already. Someone's already doing it. Piney Creek talked about it, and I believe he will follow through, and he will be part of what happens when that building comes. I just read that Austin's, I guess, went up 9%, the average cost of a house in less than a year. I also believe that we do and are equipped to help control the growth through the Form-based code. We've done the interior of the city. It is a great project, and will, and it translates into homes that are affordable, homes that are, in some cases, duplexes, things of that sort, and it transitions from one area to another. It will not be overly expensive. What is expensive in Bastrop now already exists. It is the beautiful, huge homes that we see around, and we are preserving that. What we are doing is, we're saying, when you transition from that area to this area, to this area, it should look like this. And, Mr. Developer, you need to make sure you follow that code. As far as controlling it, my feeling is, and we will talk about this, I think it's another question about bonds, I'm hoping, but if there isn't, the bottom line is, $34 million of bonds have been thrown on the table, and we can't afford it. Don't know what you can't afford.
Thank you. Bill Peterson.
Yes, as we all know, the city of Austin, they're basically financing themselves out of business because that's where we're going to catch the growth over here in Bastrop because numerous people are going to start moving out of Bastrop, and they'd rather drive and commute back and forth to work each day instead of living in the expensive housing and apartments, especially closer into the downtown area. But as I said, Bastrop is going to grow from that overflow from Austin. And as Herb said, we are really looking at expanding the Form-based task force to look at areas where Bastrop can expand. I do support that the city try to, or do their best to stay ahead of our growth through expanding our infrastructure. And I don't believe in incentives for developers, but Bastrop can start installing some infrastructure in these places by doing some, what we call infield. By doing infield, I don't see those in the center. I see us expanding our infrastructure that has, that should have been done years ago in anticipation of growth so we can get utilities in some of these areas that do not have the utilities to build on. And some of these folks are wanting to build, not even developers. They're just wanting to buy a piece of property in Homestead without developing a whole community. So if the city could follow up and do some infield in some of these areas that do not have water, sewer, electricity, I think it'll help quite a bit, and people will come in and build their own affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kelly Gilliland.
Bill's right. The more expensive Austin gets, the more people head our direction, which is good for us at the present time, but it could lead to what Ms. Curtis was talking about, which is hypergrowth, and it could have a severe impact on the services and the infrastructure that the city is able to afford and offer. When developers come to town looking to build a subdivision or open a development, the city works with them to ensure that they pay their fair share of the impact of that development. They have to pay for a portion of the road. They have to pay for the portion of the infrastructure that they need. And the city is also responsible for paying for a portion of it to get up to that development. And so we have to be very careful that we approve projects that we can afford. Herb was right. There's $35 million worth of projects that the city manager has put forward that are just repairs to infrastructure and refurbishments and new projects that we need that are just for basic services. We can't afford all that. So we have to do it smart, and we have to work with the developers to make sure that the current residents are not paying the brunt of what the developer wants to do. And that sometimes gets overlooked when we're so excited about getting a new subdivision, that we sometimes overlook the fact that more people mean, we need more schools, we need more police, we need more services, and so the city has to look at it from a big picture, which I'm proud to say that I think we're doing a pretty good job of. Of course, we could always do better, and we're always striving to do more, but the planning and zoning department, Form-Based Codes Initiative, the city manager's office, the legal department, the comprehensive plan, all those things fit together to make sure that our growth is smart and not just hypergrowth. Thanks.
Thank you. And Deborah Jones.
I think the main way to control what we're really seeing is overflow from Austin is to have developers really bear the brunt of what it costs to develop. A big part of the bond package that's going to be proposed in November is to put in new roads and new infrastructure, and that's in the face of what we have in the city right now, which is literally crumbling. And it's pretty hard to take in town when you see areas of town where the infrastructure is in really poor shape, and we're, you know, we've negotiated deals with developers to go in and put in roads and infrastructure or portions thereof to promote that development. And I think there's a way that you can structure those deals where they are, you know, they're paying for that. You want to develop here, you have to bear those costs. It's, I think to a certain extent, growth is going to control itself. You know, at the end of the day, you look at water and how much water we have. I don't know exactly how much control we have over just wanting to constantly get bigger and bigger and bigger. There are other issues that we really need to think about, and how much water there is, and being really attentive to what we already have in place, and putting that in order is a priority over just continually pulling in more and more and more growth.
Thank you. And the last question from independent Texans is, "The rules for governance at the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation are under review for changes. What are your thoughts about how the BEDC rules can be improved?" And we'll start this time with Bill Peterson.
I think we've all kind of discussed the issues with the BEDC board. And that's, we've got people on the board that are on other committees and the council, and that's one of the biggest visions that need to be changed, to get some smart eyes in there so we can get some different people in there that's not looking at so many issues at one time to make decisions for the BEDC.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Herb Goldsmith.
Pretty simple. Number one, focus on economic development, not just pet projects that come up for whatever reason. Number two, follow the rules. You have them, follow them. If you read the paper on Saturday, you'd see that some of the rules weren't being followed, and I happened to be in a meeting in February and brought up an issue. And it appears, I'm not going to say it was because of me, but clearly, they reexamine the situation, and they found that they were not being transparent, and they were not being fair, because given the incentive that person would have gotten, a lot of other people would be lining up at their door asking for that, asking for that type of money. It worked out. It was because it became transparent. It was subject to review, and both parties agreed that they just were going to terminate, you know, that contract, or pending contract. They didn't sign the contract. Better yet. Now, what else? Oh, yes. We have a former council member, a mayor, and two council members on BEDC, and they vote. And a quorum is four. Don't need to do the math on this. And if you're discussing the matters before the meetings, you can already decide the outcome of the situation, which is the whole issue of transparency. So I have asked the BEDC folks, that's one reason I don't want to do the charter thing. They have an ad hoc committee looking at their bylaws, and their bylaws, and I asked legal counsel. They could choose, they can amend the bylaws to determine how many members of council, if any, will be on, and how many would vote. It's in their court right now, and I know I'm watching. So in terms of focusing on economic development, they had the strategic plan that occurred in 2012. I was a part of that. I think it was great. I think it's one reason our sales taxes have gone up because they followed a plan, and of course, it's retail. I have to stop.
Okay, and next is Deborah Jones.
It wasn't that long ago in Bastrop that the way you got put in charge of something was to not show up at a meeting. That's how people kept their membership up. And so to me, if we have a mayor who has the ability to elect people or to nominate people on a committee, and that person's qualified, let him serve. You know, from what I see, there's not, there's a lot of, the council doesn't necessarily agree on a lot of stuff, so to think that just because you're on the council, that you're going to go and serve on a committee, and you're all going to agree and collude, I just don't really see that as an issue. I think the Economic Development Committee, they're probably one of the committees that does, one of the best jobs of all of the organizations that we have, and I think they should be allowed to make that decision themselves. And, you know, as far as the decision that you were speaking about earlier, I think that that cost $9,000 to do a study to decide if what the development committee was doing was correct, and the study concurred with the decision that they made. So.
All right, and Kelly Gilliland.
I worked for the BEDC myself for three years, so I've seen it firsthand. I know how it operates. Some of the members of the BEDC board are still on there from when I worked there. And between 2005 and 2008, it's one of those boards where the same people serve all the time, and the mayor, the two councilmen, and a former councilman, who have all served for years in the city, also vote on that board. If the BEDC changes its bylaws and says that they only want, you know, one council member or no council members, or just ex officio council members, that still has to come to city council to be approved. So there's still a chance that we, because we have a lot of double-voting people, might say, no. We want to keep our, we want to keep our power at BEDC, so we don't like that plan. State law, written a long time ago, says that four council members can be on the BEDC, and I'm frankly kind of surprised that they haven't tried to push for that because it is such an incestuous arrangement now. It needs to be separated. We have a lot of great minds in our community now. We have, the days of, you know, we can't find anybody to serve on a board are over. We have people with all kind of varied experience everywhere who have applied to serve on these boards, and they're not getting any consideration because the same old people keep applying, and, oh, we know him, and he's good, so let's ask him to be on there. It's the same old thing. We need some fresh ideas. The BEDC's primary focus is to bring us jobs. They, that's what they do. They can bring them through retail. They can bring them through manufacturing. They can bring them through high-tech, but that's their focus. As long as they're doing that, then the council can stay out of their business. But as soon as they're not transparent, and as soon as they're not following their own rules, then we have to step in. And I'm hesitant to do that because I think they can do it themselves, but we have too much council representation on the board. Thanks.
Okay, so we're going to do the questions of each other in a second here, but I do want to ask somebody, Charles or anyone else, just to collect the cards of people who want to ask questions. And if you haven't written yours yet, don't worry about it. You can still bring it up to me if somebody could just volunteer to do that. Okay. So this is going to start with Herb Goldsmith. You can ask your opponent a question. And a question, don't go on and on, just a question.
I have only one question. Bill?
That's right. You can only ask one question.
I actually only have one. I haven't, I didn't think of it. But if, thinking back when you were on the city council, is there anything you would have done differently?
While I served on the council?
Yeah.
I can truthfully answer that and say, no, there was nothing that I would change at this time because when I served on the previous council, we all, we worked very closely together, and we worked for each other, and we worked for the citizens of Bastrop. So everything flowed fairly well, and we didn't get any complaints from the public, which I think was a very good thing because we all worked together as a team, and it really worked for us.
Okay, and Bill Peterson, you can ask Herb Goldsmith a question.
Herb, why in the world do you want to get on our city council?
Bill, thank you for being honest in your reply to mine, but you're going to have to force me to lie. Honestly, I do want to apply my experience and my government background and be a positive factor. I also, when I came to Bastrop, I made a commitment that I was going to be more involved with the community I lived in than in prior communities. And I wanted to make the time, even though I'm working full-time, and I have a lot of obligations. I know I can do this, and I know I will make the sacrifice. I enjoy problem-solving. I really do. I was a former director of research for the Department of Juvenile Justice, and I just love mind vendors. I also like collaboration, and as a chair of the task force for the Form-Based Code, I gained so much from doing that that I thought I would take it a step further and run. And here I am with you.
All right. Okay, and let's see, Kelly Gilliland, do you want to ask Deborah Jones a question? All right.
So, Ms. Jones, in the last forum, you said that recreation and tourism were not your priorities for the city, and they shouldn't be the priorities of the city. And I have a question for you about the Bastrop Fine Arts Guild. If you had been on the city council when that project came toward us, would you have voted to approve the $400,000 that the city gave the guild? And if they require additional funding, and you're elected, would you continue to fund them? them?
I would not have approved that much funding for the Arts Guild. And as far as making any sort of call as to what I would do in the future, I just couldn't really answer a question like that. I think it would depend. I mean, obviously, I didn't have the information that the council had before them to make that decision. On the outside looking in, that seems excessive. So, you know, just my response with what I know about that would have to be no. But as far as any future decisions, I would, if you were asking about my participation, I would just have to make that decision at the time it was asked.
Okay. And Deborah Jones, what's your question for Kelly?
Well, my question to you is, what do you think are some of the contributing factors to the excessive legal fees that we have as a city?
This year has been the most expensive legal year for the city of Bastrop that we've ever had. We are in two major lawsuits at the moment. One is for the groundwater permit because we have fearful landowners that are next to where we're planning to produce our water that are afraid we're going to take their water. And so, we have that lawsuit going on right now. And we also have a lawsuit against some developers who tried to take the rights of some of our citizens and they, and we stepped in because the city also owns land in that area as well. So, they were trying to usurp the city's rights as well and tax the citizens an enormous amount and have them, and become their own taxing entity basically to have them pay for the infrastructure. And the city stepped in on behalf of the city, the county, and the BISD. We all own property in this area. If that lawsuit is settled in our favor, we will recoup all the costs for that. So, we consider that a good investment. So, those are two crucial needs that we have no choice, but we have to fund those two needs and one will be reimbursed. But the other reason that I think legal expenses are climbing this year is because we are growing so quickly that everything we do requires legal oversight. We have contracts, we have roads, we have people that we're hiring. We have so much going on in the city right now that we need a legal set of eyes on pretty much everything. And if we don't have that, then we get sued willy-nilly and that's expensive for us, too. So, our current city attorney has saved us money in lawsuits. Oops, I'm out of time, sorry.
Okay. So, I'm going to get right to the questions that have been offered by the audience. And I'm going to try to, I'll just say whether it's directed towards any one of you or all of you. I believe this one is for all of you. Do you have a building and planning awareness plan for future crises as our, I think it means, it's supposed to be, for fire or floods in our city? Let's start with Bill Peterson.
Please read it again.
Do you have a building and planning awareness plan for future crisis related to fire and floods for our city?
I'm going to take that to main shelters. I believe the question's being asked, in case we have floods or fires, a place where people can go. Yes, one's in progress right now. And we have worked very well with the BISD in the past when we needed shelter here in the city of Bastrop during the 11 fires. And everything worked out pretty well. And the only issues that I first saw by walking around visiting with people in these school shelters, if you will, is that our officials that were in charge of the evacuation and so forth didn't directly get out and talk to these people. And the people got tired of just watching things on TV and they needed someone in authority to come out and visit with them and kind of give some information and updates about their property losses. But yes, I think with the BISD and the future reg center, I think we'll have enough shelters to accommodate any unforeseen tragedies as it floods and fires. Thank you.
Okay. And Herb Goldsmith.
It's not so important that I have a plan, but did I have a plan so there could be a plan? Yes, I did. Two years ago, I recommended a change in the org chart. I think they followed through with it and I think it's called Director of Public Safety. Is that your title? Yes. And at that time, I was also talking about dividing out Mike Talbot's, I submitted this over two years ago, basically saying, "Hey, look, we need somebody over the fire." And actually, at that time, the maintenance operations and everything else. So, that kind of happened. They have a plan, they know what they're doing, et cetera. Another thing is, I finally get to bring up the bond issue, is my understanding that there's a need for a water tower out on the west side because if there was a fire, there's not enough pressure to run the hose, to run the hoses. I found this out by talking to Mike Talbot as he walked out the door one day and I said, "Gee, you must have a lot on your mind." And he said, "You know, for two years I've been talking about this." And it actually is in the bond package. It goes for $3 million and it's been one of my priorities. We were asked to, out of the $34 million, pick $5 million, which is what we can afford, apparently. And that was one of them. So, I am pro. And the other thing is, when I was doing the work for Maryland, I was in charge of, we had to put together an area-wide plan for all our facilities throughout the entire state. And the way you did that was you developed a resource network. And that resource network was accessed during hurricanes and floods. And I was actually called into the command center a couple of times. And what we would do is we'd say, "Oh, guess what? This creek is overflowing. We need to move 500 people. What are our resources?" We knew the phone numbers, we called them, boom, they were gone, they were out. Because we had facilities with up to, you know, 800 people. So, I know how to do that. I know what it takes to coordinate that. And I know it is all about planning. And it's also about rehearsal. You don't just stage a car wreck, you stage another fire. So, yes, I do have a plan.
All right. And next is Deborah Jones.
I do really well with chaos and bringing order to chaos. It's something I do really well. Several years ago, when Katrina hit, Michael and I staged relief efforts out of our home. We worked with people from over 40 states. We ran several hundred thousand dollars for 13 days until FEMA finally recognized an area up in Louisiana that had been called a dead zone. And it was Waveland. And we pulled together, I think we worked with 30 churches locally and set up, had food three days a week. We had a commissary, we had a clinic, we got electricity, all remote. We set it up from Bastrop in Waveland and just sent truckload after cattle, truckload full of food and supplies up there. And when the city of Bastrop finally came in and took that over from our house, they hired over, not hired, but they had over 100 volunteers that took over what we had been doing out of our home. And then when FEMA came in and recognized that area, then, you know, they were good to go. Those people were getting taken care of. But that's, I really consider that probably one of my strongest points.
Okay. And Kelly Gilliland.
The city works very closely with the county emergency management office. They hypothesize drills, they go through everything that they need to do to prepare us for any kind of disaster, be it flood, hurricane, you know, whatever might hit us here. We do have a new Director of Public Safety now who oversees both the police department and the fire department. And we are putting some paid firemen on staff as well. Herb's right, we need a water tower over on the west side of town and that is in the budget and it's been designed. And we, our fund balance is so healthy at the moment that we may be able to fund at least a portion of that out of fund balance. So, it may not have to go straight to a bond, but that's a necessity, as is a potential fire department, a fire station over there on that side of town. It's something that we've been talking about for a couple of years. We do not have a piece of land to put it on yet, so that would be an additional cost. And then it would be a couple of million dollars to build the building and buy the trucks. But it's something that's in the works for the future. In the meantime, for any immediate crises, we've all seen how this community pulls together. The ministerial alliance joins with us. We open the convention center, city hall, whatever it takes to take care of our citizens. And frankly, anybody who happens to be stranded from another, like for Katrina or Rita, when all of the evacuees came through this way, the city opened its stores and we took in as many as we could. So, the community has a plan for disaster.
All right. The next question is, from a city government perspective, what is the one best thing about Bastrop? What is the one thing that gives you pause? And let's mix it up a little bit this time and go over to this side first. Let's have Kelly Gilliland answer that first.
My favorite thing about Bastrop is the sense of community. Everybody knows everybody, which is sometimes not exactly what you want because they know your business, but everybody seems to care about each other. There's families that have been here, my own husband's family helped found this place. There's families that have been here since the beginning. And they stick around because we mean something to each other. That's why we moved here. We love the small-town atmosphere and we know it's going to grow, but we hope that it keeps its charm and its vibrancy and its same community spirit. The thing that gives me pause in city government is people that play loose with the rules. They stretch the ethics ordinance, they're not quite as transparent as they need to be. They say oops when they release information that shouldn't be released. I've helped strengthen those rules by pushing for, by calling people out basically for things that weren't quite by the rules. And I continue to want to pursue that in my next term. We're not done. It's a handshake deal, it's a favor for a friend. The same thing that makes us a good community sometimes works to our disadvantage because everybody knows everybody and they want to help out their friends. So, we're past that now. We can act like a big city and be transparent and give everybody a fair shot and all play by the same rules.
Okay. And Deborah Jones?
I love that Bastrop's a rural community. I love that we have farms and ranches and love the state parks. And, you know, that's what attracted me when I initially moved here. And I would really like to work as far as the smart growth, to really be able to maintain that, not to try and duplicate what's going on in other communities, to just keep bringing in more money and more growth. And, you know, I don't think that's the end game for me. People want to come to Bastrop, they want to come to Bastrop for what it is and not to make it like every other community.
Okay. And Herb Goldsmith. From a city government perspective, what is the one best thing about Bastrop and what is the one thing that gives you pause?
As far as the city government is concerned, it's given me a role in the House of Hearts at the Game of Thrones, but what gives me pause is, and why I like being here and want to help the city government, is because my wife loves this community. We wouldn't still be here if she did not love it so much. And we made a lot of great friends here. Some of the closest friends I've ever made in my life have been here. That's what gives me pause.
Okay. And Bill Peterson?
As someone who's very partial to this, as I've said before, I am a native Bastropian. And I was born and raised in the city and I guess they'll plant me here, too, because I'm not going anywhere, none of my family's going anywhere. You know, through my career with Federal Bureau of Prisons, I worked all over the United States, but I could never find a place that worked like Bastrop as far as the sense of community, the people that live here, love it here. And you don't hear as many people moving out of Bastrop once they get here to stay for a little while. And, you know, as far as our government, we left California when I retired. And my wife walked up to me one day after I was retired. She said, "Bill, what are you going to do? We're going to stay here or we're going to go home?" I looked around at her and said, "We're going to go home." And I got a big hug out of that. So, it worked. So, here we are in Bastrop and Bastrop is where we'll stay. And I did say I wouldn't, I did tell her I wasn't going to get involved in politics after we moved back home. And I wasn't here a good six months and I started getting phone calls. And here we are today. But it's just a wonderful place to live. Thank you.
Can I ask the candidates if you would mind us moving to one-minute answers? Because I really, the thing that I don't like about political forums is when the audience questions don't get asked and answered. So, would that be okay with the panel? Very good. Huh? If you want to do it, great. All right. So, "Some of us are interested in future development, not only within Bastrop city limits, but also the surrounding area." And by the way, did you catch that timers? You guys are doing a great job. Okay. "What kind of community do each of you envision for future development? What will your criteria be for deciding what you will and will not support for inclusion in development plans?" And I know for a fact this wonderful person who wrote this lives in the ETJ, your extraterritorial jurisdiction, which most people don't know what that is or know very little about. So, let's see, we'll start with Herb Goldsmith.
First of all, I think there needs to be plenty of green space. I think it should be based on the Form Based Code model that includes transition from one area to another area. I believe there needs to be an understanding that there would be need for parks and recreation or recreational activities, whether that be paths, sidewalks, et cetera. And I believe you should want to live there when it's built.
Okay. And Bill Peterson?
I too believe in the concept of Form Based Code because if you take the time and look at the way Form Based Code is set up, it makes our entire city look like a real city instead of building something here, then something on the next lot that doesn't appeal to that community. I myself, I encourage people that live out in the suburbs, within the ETJ, to, if they're coming to Bastrop, come into the city of Bastrop and build in the city if you will because our population's time does not justify the people that live in our particular area because most of the people live outside the city limits.
All right. And Kelly Gilliland?
Future development should be planned in advance. Whether it's in the city or the county, we need to work together to keep the whole area congruent, to make sure that we're not building up too much on our watersheds and we're not putting too much stress on the watersheds, that we have enough green space, that we have a good balance of different price ranges for housing. I mean, there are some subdivision people that want to come in and build only mansions and some who only want to build rent houses. There's some in between there that the city has to be careful to offer something for everybody. And I also think that working with the county helps us with that, too, because they have a different set of rules and sometimes we go by theirs because they make more sense.
And Deborah Jones?
I would like to see a way to include the people that are in the ETJ. I think that's something that we really need to look at. I think that the city's done a great job as far as the way that the vision that many people had over the last few decades, you know, just seeing all that come together and how pretty the town is when you drive through central Texas. There is really no other town that is as pretty as Bastrop. But I really think that ultimately, water is going to be the thing that dictates to us how we're going to grow.
All right. And this one was directed to Herb Goldsmith. Mr. Goldsmith, you have praised the Piney Creek subdivision, which I oppose. Please explain your position and discuss the traffic issues to develop as 170 families with... with 1.8 cars each drive through Carter Street and adjoining intersections between 7:30 and 9:00 approximately each morning and between 4:30 and 6:30 each evening." It's a very specific question.
Well, I have a specific answer. It's pretty easy. I wrote a letter to the editor explaining my viewpoints before it was finally approved and as to why. I actually met with the developer and he, in fact, was well-versed in Form Based Code and employed many of the elements of Form Based Code with the, creating 40 acres of green space and 40 acres of housing. The way he set up the roads was less impermeable surfaces, so the water would run off. He addressed all those issues. He also was vetted by the planning and zoning, was vetted very thoroughly by the city. And to back up what I say, as part of my three top, the $5 million priorities, was the reconstruction of Carter Street from the railroad tracks to the Magnolia. I actually have put that in as one of my priorities.
Okay. And do any of the other candidates want to speak to this at all? Okay. All right. So, the next question is, "I am very disappointed to learn the convention center isn't available at a reduced cost for our annual veterans banquet. Our veterans save us and serve us, and it's a shame that the community doesn't have access for such a wonderful event. I hope that you will change the course of the use of the convention center to serve our veterans at a reduced or free charge. What will you support..." Okay, I'm just going to end it there. So, let's start with Deborah Jones.
In the real world, if you're not making enough, if you've got a product that nobody's buying, you lower the cost. So, I can totally see their point. And especially, I think too, that, you know, it's fine to have rules and all that sort of thing, but I think you also have to be able to have the flexibility to make reasonable decisions. And if you have groups coming to you wanting to use a facility that's pretty much spends a lot of time vacant, and you've got people that really are deserving of that time, I think you should be allowed to make that decision. And I personally would be in agreement with either offering it for free or at least at the cost of the staff and the electricity, so that that service could be, that that convention center could be used.
Okay. And Kelly Gilliland?
I think Ms. Jones is right on some of that because the convention center does sit vacant a lot. I don't know the pricing structure. I have heard complaints that it is cumbersome, but it is based on conventions that, from neighboring cities, so the pricing is based on what other cities do. I know that our new DMO structure, that's one of the priorities of the DMO structure, is to take a look at the convention center and see why it's not used as much as it should be and what we can do to better utilize it. It was paid for by hotel occupancy tax, so the majority of its use should be from out-of-towners who spend the night in Bassdrop. So, it could be that the reason that the veterans are not getting a discount is because we've reached our maximum number of people we can discount. I'm not sure, but the majority of the use has to be for out-of-towners.
Okay. And Mr. Peterson?
Yes, I think the veterans group should get, for the banquet or whatever, should come in and should have reduced rates. But what our veteran group have to do is come into a city council meeting and ask for a variance. Ask the city to accommodate the veterans because the veterans deserve it. But I think it's just as simple, come in to City Hall and put that question before the city council to get a rate reduction, and I think it will work out. Thanks.
And Herb Goldsmith?
What was the, what was the purpose?
It was for veterans, the annual veterans banquet. And the person who wrote this was asking, was raising that he or she thought it was a shame that the community can't, the veterans can't afford essentially to pay for the convention center.
Well, Bill's right. They should come up, they should put it out there and ask for a variance. Either that or do it on the same night as they have the Grand Ole Opry. Pay $5, you get in and take over. That's probably their best bet.
All right. Okay. This is a question for Deborah Jones. You said you would restructure city council should you be elected. How would you, how would you restructure city council? Now, how would a restructured city council look and function?
Being able to serve on city council would, I believe, the part that I would play would just make the council more congenial. The council is very divisive. You might not think that sitting up here, but on the outside, it looks like a circus. And just about every time we have a council meeting, the topic of the evening of the next day, of the next few days, is just some of the shenanigans that go on. And I believe that my place on the city council would eliminate a lot of that.
Do any of the other council candidates want to speak to that question? Okay. Yes? Okay. All right. So, Kelly, I think hers was on first. Go ahead.
Oh, go Kelly.
Well, what Ms. Jones thinks of as shenanigans is actually your government working for you. We are not permitted to discuss our issues behind closed doors. That's a violation of the Openset Meetings Act. So, we often come up here, six of us plus a city manager, all with our own ideas about how things should go, all thinking we're right, and we have to hash it out right here in front of you. So, it may look like we're, you know, we're butting heads, but we're going through the process that you deserve to see. So, we sometimes get a little heated with it, but there's, you know, it also comes down to leadership too. We have rules of decorum and we have, we have a leader that sometimes instigates, so we sometimes have to call him out on it. And we call each other out on things because that's the way it's supposed to be done. You should see your government at work, and that's what we do.
And Mr. Goldsmith, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just a quick one. I mean, it seems like the agenda's awful, awfully stacked with different items, with different priorities. And so, they're competing against each other. It just seems as if one just should take the time to prioritize, have, as Mike and I talked about, and I got this from him, two council meetings may not be enough. You may need four. You may need two, you may need two formal council meetings and then two meetings before the council meetings to discuss the agenda, what should be on the agenda and what the priorities are and what the plan is. What's happening now to a certain extent is they just, people arrive, the agenda's there, it's very full, and it's frustrating.
Okay. This question is actually two questions, so whoever wrote this, you cheated a little bit, but that's all right. It says, "If the convention center was not operating at a $2 million loss, what would you use the current hot fund for? Why is the convention center not profitable?" All right. So, let's start with, I've lost my place. Who's next up? Who would like to answer this question first?
Oh, I will.
Okay.
I did a lot of research on this. In the initial report by Teague's back in 2008, whatever, it basically said, "A convention center here, if you're lucky, will generate about 18% of its revenue." They predicted this. And they said, "But if you have aggressive marketing, you might get 20-something percent." And then someone floated a figure of 51%, justifying building it. To date, it's only hit the 18-, 19% mark. And so, it wasn't meant to be from the beginning, but it needs to be. And also, they said, "Oh, the way you're going to get your 51% is you're going to do all this aggressive marketing." So, bam, what happens? One million more. So, one million goes to marketing, one million goes to building, to keeping it up. So, this is going to require a great deal of research.
You have to stop.
You let Kelly go on.
All right. So, Mr. Peterson?
Very quickly. It's like, it's like common sense on the convention center. I do know that the convention center was, the fees were set when the convention center was built, but they went out and looked at comparable cities and what their rates were. And I do believe if we get the rates down in that convention center, it'll get more use, a lot more use than it is getting now with the current fees that are being charged.
And Ms. Gilliland?
The convention center is sold right now by our current staff, but it is not marketed, and that is a huge problem that we have been trying to figure out what to do with for the past year. We have a, we have a sales staff that if you call and want to book something there, they will help you, but we do not have anyone that goes out and finds oil companies that want to have, you know, conventions here or, you know, other organizations. The point of the convention center, as I said earlier, was it's paid for by hotel occupancy tax, which means it's supposed to require a hotel stay. There's no hotel that's connected to the convention center, so it's kind of hard to generate that. There is a plan in place now with the Hyatt that they are going to help run a transportation system, if this, if this plan goes through, run a transportation system between the different hotels and the convention center that could help generate some sales there. But the new DMO, that is going to be one of their first priorities, is to get that convention center profitable, well, as close as it can get anyway.
You have to stop. Okay. And Deborah Jones?
I know that in other towns typically convention centers are built with a companion hotel, and, you know, we didn't do that. But I know that we've looked at other towns and we set up a structure for the funds on that. Sometimes you just have to structure that within what works in, for our city and look for, you know, instead of just, I know I hear a lot of rules about following rules and transparency. Sometimes you just, there's common sense, and sometimes I think you really need to look at what works for Bassdrop, not what works in Georgetown, but what works for Bassdrop. And I think that that's something that needs to be considered.
Okay. And so, we're going to now do the closing statements, and you have two minutes apiece, and we're going to go in reverse order from when we did the opening, so we're going to start with Deborah Jones.
I'm running for city council. I've felt a great deal of civic responsibility in making this decision, especially as this is our home and all of our children have been moving back to Bassdrop. I bring a lot to the table. I'm very successful. I'm a negotiator. I know how to put deals together. I know how to work with lots of conflicting people, and I believe that right now, when I look at the council, there's a lot of division, and I don't like it. And a vote for me is a vote for a council that's really something that the city can be proud of. Thank you.
All right. And Kelly Gilliland?
I have to say that my eyes were opened when I finally got elected last term. I was kind of naive and thought that we all played by the same rules and that we'd just come up here and we'd read our packets and we'd make some decisions and everybody would be happy. It doesn't work that way, not with so many strong personalities up here and not with so many different agendas going on. We do need to come together with some leadership, but in the meantime, we are all fighting for citizens to be heard, and that is something that I pride myself on. I listen to everybody. I read every word in that packet. I want to know all sides of the issues, and I ask all the questions that I want to ask, even if I have a council member at the other end of the table going like this to try to get me to be quiet. That's the kind of division that Ms. Jones is referring to here, and it doesn't stem from me. I'm just asking some questions and being told by others that I'm asking too many. But I don't want to talk about that. I want to talk about why it's a good thing for me to be on council. I love it here. Bassdrop is more than just roads and infrastructure and what's on the surface. We're a community that we, we live together, we work together, we play together, and we want to share our town with others. And to do that successfully, we need to look at the big-picture view. We can't just be focused on how many potholes we can fill and, you know, how much drainage we can fix. I mean, the Bassdrop Ms. Jones describes as like the runways at Austin-Burgsturm Airport. They're perfect condition and they don't flood and nobody lives there. We don't want that here for our community. We want to be a place where we all can call home, that we are proud of, and we share this with our friends. That's what I'm working toward, the big-picture view. I want a second term so that I can expand this exciting vision that I see. Thanks.
All right. And Herb Goldsmith?
All right. First of all, I want to clear up a few things. I definitely want to keep our water. And I don't think we need a charter amendment. Once you open the door, it's going to be a cascade and it won't just be a simple ballot amendment, and we're going to tie ourselves, lock ourselves out of really having it transparent and do it right. Regarding the DMO, I do not think the city should run it, but I think it's the city's obligation to determine the best structure and ensure responsibility of how the money is spent. I believe in policy, not in politics with hidden agendas. Sound policy drives the future. Reactive decisions impair progress. Honest and open dialogue without pressure creates hope and transparency. And I know that can happen. And I really have enjoyed this forum. Thank you.
All right. And Bill Peterson?
As through my work experience, I know I can bring some new ideas to the city council and the citizens of Bassdrop. I'm a very good listener and I'm always available to citizens of Bassdrop for their input and suggestions. If elected to the city council, I plan to continue trying to reduce waste in all areas of city government. I want to be known that the city council worked for the, I want to be known that the city council worked for the citizens of Bassdrop and am entrusted to make good decisions that affect, good decisions to prepare us for future growth and not try to catch up with growth. I want to increase public safety through annual refresh training for our police officers, our firefighters, and to update, update training for code enforcement officers. I want to give all city staff the resources they need to do their jobs so they can take ownership of their jobs. The city must update and maintain all infrastructure such as water, wastewater, drainage and medical systems. Our municipal investment for Bassdrop will grow, and we have to promote smart and responsible development to coincide with the growth programs such as the Form Based Task Force. I want to continue to be a public service and a good listener that puts citizens' concern before all personal agendas. I'm in this race because I care about the citizens of Bassdrop. And when I say that, it makes me think about former mayor Tom Scott. As he would walk the streets of Bassdrop on his daily walks, he would pick up trash and put it in the mayor's container, in the president's mayor's container. And if we could have everyone to think of what a healthy community we would have here in Bassdrop. I'm here because I care. Late for me, Bill Peterson, May 7. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, candidates. We deeply appreciate you participating in this. I want everyone to know that this forum will be online at BTXNTV.tv, the city's channel. And early voting started today, and it goes through May 3. Election Day is May 7. If you are so inclined, we have a form evaluation sheet in the back if you would like to give us your thoughts. You can let us know if you're willing to share that with the candidates as well. We'd like to get your feedback about how you experienced this forum. I do want to thank the two timekeepers, mother and son, is it? Okay. Thank you so much for jumping to it. And we're going to close. If anybody wants to join us over at La Hacienda for more discussion and a little discussion. If anybody wants to join us over at La Hacienda for more discussion and a little bit of socializing, you're welcome to do so. Thank you so much, everyone. Appreciate it.[1788.83][1788.83](APPLAUSE)[1789.83]